There's others, 12, 13, talk about the liability, talk about requirements of the home and requirements of specified location. If they're not asking for that, we can't mandate that, and so therefore they'd be doing remote work and out of policy.
Do we add a clause in that section that says, you know, in an emergency situation, you know, these, you know, these are subject to something? I don't know, you know what I mean?
You could, you could put something that says, you know, this policy does not include mandatory remote work as deemed necessary. If that's what we're doing, but the moment we mandate somebody and they're not, they're not requesting it, they're not checking their, you know, they're not consenting to having their home checked for appropriateness, their worksite checked, none of that. So none of the checkboxes will get filled if we're mandating it. So it's either going to be, now, the other, the other alternative is if we are mandating that there's, we're closing town hall, or, you know, or we're closing a department.
Right.
It, we don't mandate that they do remote work, we just mandate that we're closed. And if they choose preemptively to be somebody that upon an emergency or a closing of their department, had they gone through these steps in this policy, now they can enact their, like, emergency remote work.
I believe that was what that was trying to address. The idea that somebody has gone through the process with their department head, it is approved and on the books. We have a situation where, we'll use the pandemic example, where a two to three year initial period of time was assumed and continuity of operations must continue. But there are certain key positions that must be able to function. And I think that is what it's trying to capture. Thank you.
So I, I just think there needs to be some clarity on that, because it does, this doesn't, this sentence just says, in some cases, employees may be mandated, doesn't say that they have to preemptively, on their own, already be approved for remote work, it doesn't say anything about that. It just says that they can be man- mandated.
Okay. I almost think it might make sense to take that sentence out of the start of that section, three, put it at the end as its own paragraph, and maybe expand a little bit and say, because that says mandated in a emergency for continuity of operations, it doesn't say we close town hall for a day or two, and you need to work from home now.
Right.
It says, we have a pandemic suddenly, and you're at home for a week, and now, okay, now we need to start processing payroll. And, you know, those things, now we can mandate it, and I think we could, I think we could expand on that, number one, because I think we just focus on, yeah. I think we expand on the type of crises examples a little bit, but I also think we could say, in such, in such of a situation, you know, waiver, temporary waiver of some of the, you know, requirements of work, work at home.
Yep.
May be allowed at the, you know, under the guidance of.
Yeah, I think just pulling that sentence out of there and putting it at the end like Jake said is fine. It was unclear in that very first paragraph.
Yep, so I can make that change, so we're going to move that reference, provide additional context, move it to a separate subsection.
That, you want a separate subsection, or the bottom of that section as a separate paragraph?
Like a, okay, I could do it, either way I'm sure would accomplish what you're discussing.
It's.
Either one. I just think it should, just shouldn't be buried in that, in that paragraph. It's fine if you want to leave it under policy, but just saying that, you know, under these circumstances, this policy may be superseded.
Got it.
Based on these, you know, emergency situations.
Okay.
You could add another subsection, like continuity of operations in emergency situations or something.
Sure.
And actually just call it out, I mean, it won't be long, but you could, if that's clean.
Either one is fine, it just needs to be its own, needs to be called out a little bit more clearly.
Okay. And I was just thinking that we may want to just expand a little bit, we use the inclement, inclement weather, which I think is a good start, but then pandemic or public health, I think we should say. You know, natural disaster or public health or any other, you know, crisis situation.
The more I think about it, actually, a section 20 makes sense. Because basically you're superseding the entire policy.
Right, at the end, the rap clause at the end.
Here's the entire policy, however, due to, you know, an emergency, this may, this entire policy may be superseded.
Right, on a temporary, emergency basis?
Yeah. That's all. That's all I have for that one.
Any other changes you all want? So make those revisions, bring it back to you for your next meeting?
Yes, please.
I hate it when it takes me until read three to catch something. You read over it so many times, you know.
Some of them are, well, some of them are much longer than others, or have more sections than others too. Makes a difference. Review of the Police Department Policy 4 dot 32 Criminal Justice Information System Policy, second read.
I had no concerns on this one.
I also have no concern.
I'm good as well.
Start reading next week, or next meeting?
Please. Scott, I missed that.
No, I'm saying, next, third read is fine.
Jumping down, review and approval of the Complete Neighborhoods Grant Memorandum of Understanding. Section six.
Brian, can you talk to, I don't know if it's Brian or Mariah?
Mariah's going to be the best authority on that. The Complete Neighborhoods Grant?
What was that?
The Complete Neighborhoods Grant.
Would, would you come up, please? Just quick for questions or comment. Thank you.
I was having trouble with the speaker back there, so if you guys don't mind speaking up.
Sure. Okay. It got softer because it was loud in the background.
It's, it's kind of coming in that, we're figuring it out.
All right, no problem.
So if you all remember, there was a regional grant application, Greenfield, Montague, Deerfield, Whately, and Orange, and us?
Good memory.
And that was back in the fall. There was a conversation that had been awarded, and they were going to work on the scope of work. And Mariah's been working with that team to lead to this presentation and, and the attachments that outlines what each town is going to get for support services. So that leads us here to today.
Yes, we've started working with them in an unofficial capacity, kind of figuring out what we would be working on, but all of the towns hadn't done that, so now this is our official MOU, and there's a program and all of that.
Did you have a question, Scott?
No, so this, it was just the one, our item is just the one, correct?
Correct, and we're not actually expending any funds, it's just in-house help.
Okay, that was my simple question, is that there was, there's no expansion on this, and?
One project.
I'm sorry. One project, for senior housing.
Okay, yeah, it was all one, yeah, got it.
Yeah.
Any questions or concerns, Bill?
I have no concerns.
No, I just, I'm good. You want a motion?
Oh, yeah, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, motion and a signatory. It's a long one. How do you want to characterize, Brian, what works for you?
I think it's just a motion to, the MOU, yeah, approval of the MOU for the Complete Neighborhoods.
Make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding for the Complete Neighborhoods partnership and authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, as the signatory.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll get that ultimately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mariah. I'm going to jump through the last three, and then we'll come back to Weill Rock if we still have time before the joint meeting.
Okay.
Calendar year 2023, business license, Wozniak Enterprises LLC, common victular.
Yes.
So you have a brand new business seeking licensure for a food establishment with indoor seating. They've met all the application requirements, and I've double-checked with the town clerk's office, they don't need a business registration because they're an LLC registered by the state. Board of Health has done their inspections, and they're working on approval of the food establishment license.
So the app doesn't have checked off by the different departments, but they have been done, except?
Correct.
Board of Health, or is in process?
Board of Health has had the inspection, the Board of Health needs this week.
Got it. Any questions or concerns?
No concerns.
Make a motion that we approve the business license to Wozniak Enterprises LLC DBA Bagels &amp; More, located at 7 West Main Street, and it is a common victular's license. Granted today, expiring December 31st, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Deed number 573 McGuire.
Hopefully the memo was clear enough, there just apparently was a recording error when work in the field was translated back to the town clerk and eventually presented to you all. And the purchaser knew that the error, verified everything with the side of Terry Sexton and the town clerk. So there, all three parties are just seeking an amendment to the deed to correct the error.
I make a motion to amend deed number 573 for lot number 1262, issue to Sheen and McGuire for the right to burial in Irving Center Cemetery.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration of the Activities Coordinator Position Screening Committee Recommendation. Director Vatters, come on up.
In your packets, there should be a process memo that discusses the overview that the preliminary screening committee undertook for the search and their, their final recommendation.
Bill, you were a member, so I was suing you.
I was a member, so I was going to ask if Paula wanted to.
Do you want to ask me?
Put this forward.
I, I don't know what you, we had seven applicants. We had, we looked at those applicants, and we came up with four, did we do four or three? Four?
Three.
Three.
Yes.
You know, it's been a waste. We did, interviewed three people, and out of the three, there was one that stood out to all of us and felt that it was the best fit for us. And if you look at all the reviews that, and all written, that we, you know, all the information that we wrote down from each person that sat in the committee, you'll see it was pretty consecutive that we all agreed.
That's privy to the screening committee only, so we don't see those.
Okay.
But thank you.
Well, it's my proof.
Scott, what's your thoughts on it?
I was reading the memo, reviewing the paperwork. I, I don't have any, I don't see any concern that would require an additional interview, and I'd be fine with moving the candidate forward and offering the position.
Scott, we even did discuss that, because Brian did mention that to us. He said, are you comfortable with this, because we have, it, it's a big deal, and we can always go back again. But we felt that because we have a review period, and if it didn't work out, we would know by that date. So we felt comfortable and confident that this was the right person for the job.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns given that, and it's new for us too, so we'll figure it out, I think, in the first 90 days if it's a fit. And, you know, it meets the job needs and description, and if not, we can go from there. Would one of you like?
I'll make a motion to appoint Dolce, Dolce and McAndrews to the, to the position of Activities Coordinator at a starting pay rate of grade D. Regularly scheduled for 20 hours a week with a three-month probationary period pending a medical screening, core check, and with a start date on or before, and we hadn't talked about. And we hadn't talked about a time.
Yeah, start by date?
Yes.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Do we typically give two to three weeks?
Do you need, do you want three or you want four or sooner?
I think in the past you've been doing it or sooner.
Right. I think that it doesn't matter for her.
Okay.
About the time. Because, so it doesn't matter to me. Whenever you can do it, the sooner the better.
We can start tomorrow, so have a.
Three weeks?
No, but just give us time.
Start processing.
Just give us the time to do the process.
Sorry.
Yeah, enough time to process it.
I mean, is three weeks enough, March 6th or sooner?
Yeah.
That's enough for us.
That's enough time?
That's enough for us.
Okay, March 6th or sooner?
Okay.
March 6th. Will be the start date?
Or sooner.
Or sooner.
Okay.
If we can get our stuff done. And Bill, if you don't mind, I'm going to amend your motion just a hair. You didn't have a step in there. Not having worked for the town before, I mean, it just makes sense. Step one, coming in and then we.
Okay. Yep, yep.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
With a grade D, step one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
With all of that said, I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome. Looks like the Finance Committee is filtering in here. I'll give them a couple of minutes. We'll do the Wheelock. I think it'll, I think we can always table it and come back to it if we need to.
Yep.
Review of the Wheelock Street Culvert Improvement Project procurement.
I have no concern.
I don't have any concerns either. Everything checked out, so.
Yeah. The only question is where we received the grant up through 330. Does that allow for any change orders so we can expend up to the 330? Or if we approve it tonight for this amount?
Our grant amount will stay the same. So if, yeah, if we have a change order, if something comes in higher than we expected, we have wiggle room there.
We have the wiggle room there, okay.
Yeah. We just can't change the scope of work.
Correct. But if something happened and, you know,
Right.
a cost was different than they anticipated and, or however it worked on our end, something was different than we originally had prescribed.
Right.
The only other thing you're funding out of that line item is the bidding work and the contract, administration, construction administration, excuse me, of the project from the engineering firm. So you have a slate contract that you all approved that's also coming from that total.
It all still fits within the 330. It all still fits within the 330 though, combined.
The projected cost of construction was really close. It was 290 and this came at 280.
282?
282. So we're, we're very close.
Okay. Would one of you like to make a motion?
You got it. I'll make a motion to award the procurement for the construction of the Wheelock Street Culvert Improvement Project base bid in alternate number one to Flynn Enterprises Incorporated of Rainham, Mass. in the amount of $282,990. And to authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get that tomorrow.
Thank you. That'll call the joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the School Committee on the floor forward to order at 7:05 PM. Just so that everyone can hear and we can keep it orderly. Please, if you want to have conversations, take them outside. It carries up here significantly even when people try to be quiet. When we get to a point where we are going to take questions, we'll let everyone know and then you raise your hand and we'll call on you. Say your name for the record and then ask your question once we get to that point. I appreciate it. So first item up tonight is review of the elementary education budget.
Whoever's presenting.
So normally we go through and have presenters go through the FY '23 highlights and challenges and then speak to the FY '24 goals and initiatives and then we discuss the kind of details of the budget changes and questions from there.
So for FY '23, we had some unanticipated expenses in special education tuition and transportation. FY '24 reflects those changes plus the increase, the 14% increase from the Operational Services Division in private school tuition for those placements, which had a huge impact on our budget for next year and also for this year. So some of the, the Union 28 portion of budget was approved back in last month.
Yes, January 30th.
Thank you. So those line items are from our Union 28 portion. Irving had a slight decrease in the enrollment versus the other three towns. So that's why you see a lot of those negative 3.4% differences. It's now based on a five-year rolling average, which was adopted last year. So the allocation for Union 28 is, it's graduating to a five-year. So currently it is the October 1st numbers from, from 2021 and 2022. The average of those two, next year it'll be 2021, 2022, 2023 and graduating to a five-year rolling average. The total administration, we had a 4.1% decrease. For instruction, we're still in the contract that started, the negotiations that started last spring are still ongoing. So a lot of those salary lines are projections. We don't know where that agreement will land. The percent increase for total instruction is 4.9%. The total other school services is a decrease of 4.3%. A lot of these lines, when looking at these additional expenses for special education tuition and transportation, we reduced some of the, the other lines to compensate for them. We increased the fuel line, that is line 79. Increased the, the school power line also. We had some utility increases over this past year. And we have a plant operations maintenance increase of 9.7%. The total fixed charges is a decrease of 3.3%. The total acquisition of fixed assets was a decrease. We removed, we went from $14,500 in equipment lease down to $4,500. That's one of those lines we decreased to try to compensate for some of the special education expenses. But the total programs of their schools, we went from not needing a budget for that to $243,226. We go back to the budget summary page. Our requested budget, the total use of funding is $3,813,488. It's a 10.89% increase. When we remove the grant lines from those, we have a amount remaining for town appropriations of $3,692,921. And moving on to Irving Secondary, we had a vote tonight.
Let's focus on elementary and then we'll move to secondary if you would.
Okay.
Is, is someone planning to speak to the current year and the next year highlights and challenges and goals and initiatives narrative that's in the budget or no?
We can speak in an overview. I'm not sure if Principal Candido is here. So some of the challenges this year is the full-time return of students after the pandemic and sort of addressing learning gaps and social, emotional learning that some of our students in Irving Union 28 have missed out on over the past few years. Additionally, I think looking at the challenges of meeting the needs of our special education students, both within the district and without, have also been a challenge. And I think some of the positives this year are professional development, where we're looking to increase our knowledge of equity in all of our schools as well as looking at the science of reading and improving our instruction in the area of English Language Arts.
Questions on narrative? From current year, next year?
No.
Questions on the narrative for current year, like next year? Budget numbers?
Are you asking for comments on budget numbers?
Yes, please.
Thank you, if I could. I think as last year, the school has done exceptionally well, in my opinion, just from a financial point of view. 10%, seems like a lot when people live in the 2.5%. People voted for that. It's a good thing they did. Years ago, if they didn't, all of our budgets would be higher than a Chinese spy bill. But what we've got here today, we've removed $243,000 for special education. So we have no choice. Students show up, that's what they need, that's what you have to pay. Remove that, they don't have a control over that. Remove the grants of another $13,000, you're up to $255,000, quarter of a million. That really doesn't affect us. It's just, it is what it is. With electricity going up, fuel going up, everybody knows the cost of everything's going up. Doesn't matter if it's the food you get at the school. Everything's gone up tremendously. When you take all those things out, the budget's up about 3.4%. I don't know how you do it, what you eliminated in order to stay at 3.4%, but I'm very pleased that you did. I don't know what else you could take out to get down to 2.5%, but I think you've done a great job. That's just my opinion.
My question is more about process and future, future budgets. And I know that seems weird because we're talking about this year's budget, but the out-of-district placement, are there? I know we have an out-of-district placement because Irving Elementary School could not satisfy the needs of whatever students we deem necessary to move out. Do we continue ongoing dialogue with the receiving school, i.e. Turner Wells High School, because that's who we have a tuition agreement with, on whether or not their program is able to effectively take that student in if they have an in-house program that would accommodate that student? And the reason I ask that is it, it just on the brain of whether or not this is a one, two. I don't know what grade. I'm not going to ask what grade. There's things that, you know, I don't want to know about. But if this is a elementary school or if this is a up through, you know, age 21 or however old we have to through Department of Ed requirements, I'm just wondering, do we have ongoing, when we have out-of-district, do we have ongoing dialogue of whether or not the secondary school is able to take that student in and accommodate those programs? They have a much more diverse and vastly larger special education program than we do at the elementary level, so.
And I think when you look at economy, you still have more options to create substantially separate programming. And certainly as our students approach the transition age from Irving Elementary or any of our Union 28 elementary schools to the middle school, high school, whichever school we send them to, our Director of Student Support Services does reach out and has continuous conversations about those particular students. And when we're looking at placement, we do look at local placements as opposed to these other schools that we might look at that might be further away. So there's a variety of reasons that the team discusses when we're having these meetings, but certainly options locally or closer are options that are discussed.
Thank you.
And we do have in sixth grade transition meetings with all of our students who are special education.
Okay.
Other question? Go ahead.
From watching the school committee meeting the other day, it sounds like the special education transportation has been removed from this budget.
So where are we going to see that reflected?
So the school committee voted to remove that from this budget due to the uncertainty of whether we're able, capable of purchasing vans, which is still very luminary in that, but it was voted in the school committee to remove it from this budget.
And I think there's ongoing discussions with the town and the school committee relative to the transportation issue. We certainly can put it wherever the town or the school committee would like, but based on the vote that occurred, it was asked to be removed from this budget for the time being as we explored options.
And what was the number again?
For transportation?
Yes.
$181,000.
And so that currently is not reflected anywhere?
Yes.
Well, at the end of the day, I will just say whether it's in the line item, the hundred and something line items or not, it's in the Irving Elementary costs. And that's where it will be in the warrant and that's where it is in the budget. And if we don't have it in here, then it won't be funded. So it needs to be in there. So I don't care if it's in a separate line that says Irving Elementary Education, Irving Elementary Sped Transportation and Secondary, but it's in there. So it's got to be reflected. And, yeah.
It would be in line 74 is where we would put that line.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying. I don't care if the school committee wants it in a separate section, separate from that, it's going to be.
We can bring that back to the school.
The entire budget regardless, so. Because it's got to be funded, so. At least that's my take.
Yeah, well, and I know at the last, I know at the last committee meeting, the school committee meeting, the discussion was to remove it so you can see what it would look like without it in there. But from now until the official time of drafting the ATM, hopefully, or if we have to, we can amend it on the floor, is working, have the school committee and administration working with town administrator on the potential purchase of transportation vehicles, but then also reinserting, if we can, if we have to hire transportation drivers, that's where that line item would go. So there's a, you know, we haven't put a placeholder. We pulled, the request from the school committee was to, or the vote was to pull it all out and just earmark it, knowing that throughout these discussions, there will be a cost attributed to transportation. They just want to see if it's going to be our personnel drivers or if it's going to revert back to the contracted services that we have if we're unable to come to another solution.
I guess from my standpoint of when we're looking at the budget and looking at the overall and, you know, what we have to actually, you know, capacity for, that has to be in the number. And my opinion is it should be at the number we know. We don't know if we can do better. So we've got to fund worst case unless we know something different. I assume the proposals are considering the union or the school being, managing the transportation?
There's a variety of topics that still need to be fleshed out and discussed relative to licensing and liability and maintenance and all of that. So we have a running working list that we're working off of between the town and the school.
I assume who's leading it because it's not, yes, it's town money and yet, but it's a school, it's a school function, so.
The principal, the Director of Finance and Operation and myself are working with Brian Smith around that, but there are many issues and hurdles that we have to flesh out before moving forward.
Do we expect to have that in time for the setting of the warrant in the next 30 days?
I'm not sure. I think the number that I'd be positive about. I think the number that I'd be positive about is what it's costing us to contract with a bus company.
Oh, that's the 181.
Correct.
Or could I ask another question?
Please.
I'm assuming that if we're going to, if it turns out that the plan is to buy a van or hire drivers and all of that stuff, it would likely be because it's less cost than what we currently have, you'd think, or why would you do it? So it seemed like a placeholder of what you're actually paying might be just a thought, you can pencil it in, whatever you and the school committee decides is not our business, but it'll give us some idea. It'll pump up that 3.4% a little bit, but again, it is what it is. You have to, can't say, here's your special education, good luck getting there, you're going to pay to get them there. The other question I had was on instruction. I know there's ongoing negotiations, I don't want us to get in the middle of them, but is, I really don't think we should ever, but is the instruction line, does that reflect what's currently there? I see there's a difference of percentage here, but is what's currently in there, what we're currently doing, or is that anticipating something, or is it?
It's anticipating that there's going to be a cost of living increase based on, first of all, for this year, because the teachers are still operating under last year salaries, so we know that there's going to be a retroactive pay for them for this year, and then also for next year. So it's an estimation of both of those two years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And we also had, I think, 11 lane changes also, so many teachers are continuing to complete more courses, and changing from, say, a master's to a master's plus 15, or master plus 15 to master's plus 30, and so we had a significant number of lane changes this year.
Okay.
For next year.
Well, in my opinion, that, whatever, it's not financially, yes, but that's a good thing. If you have teachers that graduated from Teachers College 25 years ago and didn't learn anything else, students might be getting left behind a little bit by that, so. Teachers improving themselves is worth the pay, that's good. Thank you.
Well, just a point of clarity, it is a financial piece. Each lane, each lane change is a 5% adjustment from the previous lane. So it is, it is a, so from the finance committee's standpoint, it is an increase. I just wanted to be clear, because you had just said it has no financial bearing, it's just self-improvement, and that's not up to a certain line item, there is a, there is an increase on those lane changes.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, I recognize it does have that lane change cost increase.
Yeah.
And my comment is that it's justifiable, so teachers better themselves and can better teach our kids. Thank you.
Just for reference, if I did it correctly on the fly here, that puts us at 16% net of grants, and 9% if you exclude sped tuition.
I have the 16.17% number, I'd have to calculate the excluding tuition.
Or the 3, 4-ish, excluding sped costs overall.
I have 3.82%.
Less of the sped cost?
Yes, if we did not have the special education expenses.
Other questions?
No, not questions on that, just, you know, I said this in the last meeting I was at for the school committee, I don't know where this is going to land as far as the overall levy limit for the town, where that puts us, where, you know, how we look at the end of the day, we still have to hear from two more, and then we have to go back and, you know, Brian will have to go back through and produce the final document that has everything to let us know if we've fallen within. So it's hard to say right now without, because I don't have a running tally of where we're at, under the levy cap, we'll find that out at the next meeting. But it's just, it's a large number, and I've said this at the last meeting, so I'm just reiterating it in our own meeting, that exponentially will get bigger over the next, you know, five or so years. So I know the task to the school committee at the last meeting was, you know, can you start the process very soon and really look at the line items and ensure that the overall operating budget is, you know, year over year, it's not growing just because it grows, and that there really is a service-driven budget, but also looks at the overall cost and pairs some of those line items back that don't, some of that was done this year in order to offset the cost of special education. But I'm just concerned about, you know, year FY '27, '28, '29, if we're going to be at this rate, it'll be over half a million dollars in five years for one elementary school, which I'm not sure we can sustain in the five to 10-year gap. You know, we might be able to sustain it this year under our levy limit, we haven't seen all those numbers, we'll, that'll be our task to look at when we pull everything together next, next meeting. But just, I encourage the school committee and the administration to really look at, are there, is there ways we can flatline some of that number in order to still not endanger services, but also be financially responsible to the town, so that we're not encroaching on a $5 million budget in a few years from now?
With the additional expenses, we are eligible for circuit breaker reimbursement, so we have this first year to kind of get over that hurdle, but after that, we can start to factor in that revenue into our future budgets.
Right.
Do we have an anticipated amount?
No, circuit breaker is a little unpredictable, but, you know, hopefully in the next few months, we'll get an idea based on.
And I think they're actually recalculating the formula, it used to be a different formula. This year, it was, the threshold was you had to spend $49,949 and get reimbursed, they haven't set the reimbursement rate, but at approximately 75. I think they're looking at recalculating how they do calculate circuit breaker and moving away from the four times foundation.
Right. And to be clear, that's not, that's just tuition cost, that circuit breaker is not calculated on transportation costs.
The only time transportation can get reimbursed is if there's a monitor or nurse on the bus that's in the IEP for the student.
Just in case people are grabbing calculators to figure out what that.
Don't calculate the transportation.
No.
And to point out, as Caitlin did earlier, there was a 14% increase for Chapter 766 private schools from the Operational Services Division, and so cities and towns are dealing with that increase for special education as well.
And that shows up within the sped tuition cost total?
Yes.
On your grants, Rural Aid and REAP, are those, I haven't seen, those numbers haven't been annual, have they, or, because that's a, that's an increase on grant revenue this year.
Yeah, REAP is a grant from the federal government, it operates on a little bit different fiscal year than we do, and Rural Aid is actually a line item in the budget, so we get allotted money from the state, and it's not a grant. But we are looking at options for spending them, Rural Aid has some parameters which they like you to think about when you're using the money. I believe Irving has qualified since Rural Aid has come out in some way, shape, or form five, four or five years. So we do look at offsetting the budget with grants and aid.
Line 79, the fuel, based on prior year actual versus budget, to where the request is, just curious how we got there.
So that was a projection based on last year and through the past couple of months, keeping an eye on where we are for that fuel line. So you'll see that there was a large number for 2022, that was the year where it was encouraged or accepted that teachers would have the windows open and increase airflow, so that's why that number, our budget for next year is lower than the actual for last year is to, it looks like we'll be closer to 50,000 instead of up to 59,000.
Thank you.
Can you explain the changes in line 89? The network. Yes, I can. So several years ago, we had, the ransomware.
Yeah, we had a ransom attack on our server at central office.
So our, we use Tyler Technologies product as Infinite Visions to run our general ledger, all of our payroll, our, all of our accounts payable thing, so that was moved from in-house to Souzer IT, who we use for our IT services, and it was supposed to be temporary, but they have, they're not able to update it, Tyler Technology doesn't allow them to kind of update the system and to, to let us utilize it better. So they have, Souzer IT has told us that they will no longer be able to support us with that, so we have to move it over to Tyler Technology, which is an increase, but an update and a better product. When we were having these discussions about the software we use, it was noticed that it's not really based, it used to belong in the Union 28 part of the budget, but it's not really based on your enrollment, it's split equally amongst the four schools, and it's mostly used by the offices, by the custodians, by food service, and so we removed it from the Union 28 part of the budget and into the schools part. So that's why we have an increase there, but there's a decrease in line 24 for computer contracted services. It will be more for next year than it will be for years past that, because for this initial stage of moving it to Tyler Technology, we have to go through some trainings and some updates, and then it'll decrease by about $2,400. You're welcome.
So based on that movement, effectively, each town's paying a quarter of that, is that right?
Yes, each town will pay a quarter of the cost.
So it's $120,000 cost annually? Or I'm including the line ahead, above it, sorry.
Okay.
$80,000, does that sound better?
I think it's less than that, but let me check. Remind me the line again.
Am I off on that?
I think it's line 89, Network Telegraph.
Oh, great. 89. So that also includes some other expenses. So I believe it was about $38,000 for the first year, and then it'll decrease down to about $27,000. But that line also includes some other expenditures.
While we're on the topic, what is the difference between 88 and 89?
The 88 is contracted services, and 89 is materials, and software.
So that changes in both lines, is it?
For line 88, contracted services, because our actual amount was greater than we had budgeted for in a few years, we increased that line due to, to adjust it to meet the actual necessities of the school.
I have to ask, because it's everybody's favorite topic, school power 83. With the new rates and everything, is that where the trend is showing for this year? I'm just wondering, because we budgeted the rest of the town much higher, most of our electricity usage is not that high, so.
I've been looking at it through the months, I haven't looked at it in the past month or two, but there was an increase for power, but I can look at what we are right now.
Other questions on elementary school budget?
No, I'm waiting to see how it all plays into the full budget next meeting.
Yeah.
So currently, with the invoices to date, which is usually a little behind based on our cycle, we have spent $46,799.99 on school power, leaving us with $26,201.1. We can continue to look at the invoices that come in, and that could be a number that we could, a budget line that we could kind of adjust if it seems like that we could reduce that.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with what you said, Scott, I think you said it well about, you know, capacity within the budget. At the end of the day, the total increase of real dollars that we have to come up with is above, you know, the levy limit is over $400,000, we have to cut somewhere else if it's not cut here. So at the end of the day, that's, that's the decisions we have to make. I haven't, I don't recall seeing any other budget that was making any significant reductions, because every cost is going up, so it's going to have to come from somewhere. But again, we don't have our levy numbers yet, that's for next meeting, so we'll see how it all fits in. Questions from the audience before we move on to secondary? Yes?
So first question, clarifying question, is next week the, you expect to have the numbers for the levy limit increase, is that, or is it a future date past that?
Were you able to pick up that question on the mic? Yeah, okay. For the record, that was Mark Burnett. We are not meeting, I'll check our next meeting, we are not meeting for two weeks, so at that meeting, we expect to have preliminary numbers to look at of the overall total, you know, budget overview that we do, where we roll them up for all of our receipts and all of those items.
And at that point, within the select board and the finance committee, what's the word, agree to recommend or not recommend, is that when a decision will be made?
I would be making assumptions or projections to say right now, but I think more than likely, based on what we've seen so far in the budget review, in my personal opinion, we are going to go back through and have to start redlining or having conversations with those, with all the departments about where are we cutting to make it balanced, potentially. So until it's balanced, we can't recommend it. So that'll be the process till we get to the ATM.
Has the board, either board, recommended approval of other budgets yet, or no, each department is?
No, it's all just been a presentation, we take it in, we don't make any recommendations until we see what the total calculations are at our next meeting, and we work from there.
Other questions or comments?
I do have another.
Mark?
So it sounds like the boards were looking for the actual increase of like 16% of the school budget, is that what you're kind of requesting? I'm just for clarification, is that what you're requesting the school committee to do, to present those costs for out-of-district placement students?
I was not requesting how it's presented, I was just noting that it's a cost that, currently, that's the number that we know, because we don't know anything lower, and we're obligated for it, so if it's. So if it's not in the detail that we just looked at that was presented, submitted, I think yesterday, then it will be in the next line down in the same section of the budget because it's still an elementary school cost and it still has to be there. So in terms of how far above the levy limit, we're, you know, 12 and a half percent over the levy limit in terms of just flat across the board. And, you know, I mean, Dan, you know, looks at that frequently as an example of what's our capacity. There's other things that go into that, as you know, you know, as an assessor, but they're probably pretty limited this year. And so anywhere that we have a total budget that exceeds two and a half percent grow, you know, increase over prior year, it's got to come out of somewhere else most likely. Where and how it's presented, I, I'm not, I don't have a preference or opinion. It's going to be in the total elementary cost.
Yeah, I wasn't asking where it was presented, but you want it presented in the budget because it's an elementary cost.
Yeah, ultimately, the account number has to come out of the 300s, yes. So it has to be presented from the school as a cost. It can, it cannot be shifted to a town cost and given a different line item number in some other department number. Because it's a transportation cost from the school department, it has to be in the 300s, which is the school cost. So for purpose of discussion, to be able to pull it out and have that discussion and see what the numbers were without it, that's fine, but ultimately it will land back in there, whether that's the 181.4 or if we have some expedited miraculous, you know, ability to provide alternate transportation at a lower number, that number will have to go back in under, in that, in those line items. Whether it's embedded in the elementary school expense or as Jake had pointed out, a additional line item on the annual town meeting warrant as a third item that you're looking at. Ultimately, though, it's still, the grand total is still inclusive of that dollar amount. That's where it has to live. We can't pull it out and give it a different name.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
All right, secondary?
So Irving Secondary, the school committee had a meeting earlier tonight where they voted to again level funds. So the budget you see in front of you has actually been changed to level fund the Irving Secondary to $1,477,406. I think in hope of the agreement with the select board that if we do have an increase that puts us over that, that we could ask for the town at that point to help us with the deficit.
Which I believe we've done in years past.
Yep. I don't know if you recall or any of the group up here, last year we didn't level fund?
We did. So the...
I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that question. In FY 22, FY 22, we did not level fund?
No, so for...
And then we did not spend that either.
You did not, you were, on the Irving Secondary budget was under for the actual value by about 26,000. For FY 22, it was increased to 1,477,406, and the actual came in much lower than that. And so you had asked that we level fund for this current year, which we did, and we are close to that number, but it appears that without anything significant happening, we should meet our budget.
I just don't recall why we didn't level fund the prior year. That's what I was asking, because we're at the 1477 for two years, but we haven't spent it. Maybe we will based on what you said this year, and so level will make more sense this year, but I, I don't know why, and it's a past question, it's not.
Just to sound clear, so the number's been changed, the request is now exactly what it was for this current year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Say that again, Brian.
So it's going to be $1,477,405.
That was voted in by the school committee at tonight's meeting at six o'clock.
That's not, what was in your packet?
Yeah.
Twenty-three budget is, yeah, twenty-four budget requested.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I want to be precise.
Questions or comments on secondary?
I just want to make sure, the projections for enrollment sustain a level funding of 1,477?
The projections for enrollment would, based on, when I speak with Gil Montague, business director, that's where that $1,529,320 came from. But we, based on projections last year in level funding, it worked out. I think that there's just some, you know, hope that we, that we're within budget again.
My only, my only request is if we're going to do it this way, which I encourage, is that I know we can get the numbers, I'd like to say as early as end of October, but really pushing Gil Montague to get us those numbers as soon as possible in the fall, as soon as they can be verified, because if we are going to have to look at additional funding, we'll have to know sooner than later. And we can't be waiting until November, December, and then, you know, finding out that, oh, the enrollment's much higher.
I mean, submitting the information for the October 1st deadline, hopefully we have a turnaround of two weeks, two and a half weeks.
We've had that anticipation before as well, and it hasn't panned out.
I said hopefully.
We get the quarter one and quarter two invoices very close together, because we get the quarter one quite late and then the quarter two just after that, and we just received quarter three.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions on secondary? Other questions in general on the school budgets before we go to tech? Franklin Tech. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Please come on up.
Would it be possible for us to put that on the screen?
Yes. So can you, is that turned enough there? Do you want to slide down a little? Yeah, I'm going to slide down. Maybe we'll shift it a little, Dan, if you could tell us if you can't see it?
That's good, I can see it.
You still good, Dan, from there? Okay. Let's get the right angle on the TV.
With Dan, bigger would be better.
Do we, I lost.
He'll be right, he'll be right back. He had to step out for a second.
Okay. I don't think we have a copy of this. Do we have a copy of this?
You should have a copy of it. Right now, we're in the process of a first reading, which will happen Wednesday night with our school committee, and the governor's final numbers are not out yet. We're expecting those in a couple of weeks, so what you have is a very rough draft. As far as Irving is concerned, our numbers are pretty accurate, and we can give you a pretty good assessment on what the impact would be.
Okay.
When did we receive a copy of it?
We, we don't have it.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure when the town received it, but we do not have it yet, so.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'll wait a moment and I'll have the answer. Sir, do you have a copy of this budget yet? So we do not have it yet. Send that over, we would appreciate it. So I will give you the floor. It's a first look for all of us.
Yeah, let's do some introductions. Rick Martin, I'm the school superintendent, Franklin County Tech.
Russ Cobras, business manager, Franklin County Tech.
Jackie Boyd, and I'm the Franklin County Tech school rep.
So what will be, will be as brief as we possibly can. We'll provide you an overview of how we get our money and how we spend our money, and we'll talk about enrollment and how it impacts the town of Irving and what the enrollment trends are for Irving. And again, the per people cost and the assessments are going to be pretty close, although we do not have those numbers right now. So let me start with the first line is the assessment to towns narrative. In our budget book that you're going to receive in electronic format as well as hard copy, you can click on any of the highlights that are in blue, and it will give you a description on what assessment to town is. So if I click on that narrative, it will take you to a descriptor on explaining what that exactly is. If I want to get back to where I just was, I just press the sources of funding and it will take me right back there. So we are projecting a 3% increase to the towns at large, which brings it from a 6.594 million to a 6,792 million. Last year's assessments to the towns is what we have now because we don't have the governor's numbers. So when we looked at last year and we go to, gee, you'll see Irving in this category right here, where you were per pupil cost is the far right in the, in the bright yellow. The total assessment was 508,770, and that's what it was a year ago. The assessment numbers that we're projecting are going to come pretty close to those numbers, so we're not, you know, we aren't going to be projecting it to be any significant increase. As far as the capital assessment debt service, that was a project from seven years ago. That was the windows and doors and new roof and pavement project. And if we want to take a look at how that's impacted for the town of Irving, it will explain it here. And if I want to go to the list right here for the town of Irving, it will say what the impact is on the far right, about 13,580. So that's where that would fall in for the town of Irving. When we look at chapter 78, we're doing it right now based on a projection. The inflation rate was 9.1% for the state. We did not budget at that inflation rate. We budget at a conservative 4.5% increase plus the additional students we have, which put us at 5,626. And where we get that number from, and if you look at the previous years, 5,470. And then in the next line item, you have your regional transportation reimbursement. We have it at 801,558 is what we are projecting. You would click on this cherry sheet. This is for anybody, for any school in the entire state. You click on the cherry sheet, it will take you to where we got the numbers from. And from the Department of Ed and the governor's office, I mean, the Department of Revenue, you would click down here on your, on your chart. It would just take you to a direct link. Then you just, it's real quick. You just go to all regional schools, you scroll down to whatever school you're looking for, even Irving, doesn't make a difference, whatever school you're going to be looking for. And I would scroll down here to Franklin County Tech. I press submit, and those numbers we just reviewed should be in that far right column. I can't get to that, there's the 801,558, there's your chapter 70. So you'll see where the numbers are coming from. It's a pretty transparent type of process. It kind of gives you a better idea. As far as, let me scroll back. Okay, and so now we're looking at one big point, that 801,558 that keeps coming to light. Many years ago, not that many years ago, they promised 100% reimbursement for regional transportation. So that, I'm going to just show you real quick how bad that negatively impacts our operating budget when we don't have that 100% reimbursement. We have the largest geographical area in the state by far with 561 square miles of territory and bus routes. The second biggest is 231. That just gives you the volume of how important that is in our budget. When I go down to the, how we're using that money, we're getting charged almost 1.2 million. So the difference is a $400,000 gap that we know, that we still have to cover within our taxpayers' base to cover regional transportation. And again, like all these other line items, if you wanted to just kind of click on, it will give you the whole paragraph I got through talking about, so you can kind of get an idea on, you know, what the struggles have been and what they continue to be with our regional transportation reimbursement. Non-member town tuition of those that are not part of the, the 19-member towns, they pay a significantly higher tuition rate, and we take that money to offset the operating budget to keep the assessments down. Pep tuition is a, is a private self-contained classroom. That enrollment has dropped, so we didn't pull any money out of the budget for the last several years. The revenues and our excesses and deficiencies went up a little bit from last year as we're still recovering from supplies and materials. So our overall uses of funding or our sources of funding are 14,745. And so that's kind of where we're at with that. On the second half of it, I'm going to turn it over to our business manager, Russ, and he'll tell you how we spend our money.
So on, again, to highlight on a topic or two that Rick hit, and I shared it with Brian a week or two ago, we fully expect your assessment to be roughly the same as it was for this past year. So your enrollment was 28 this past year, your enrollment for next year is 28. As Rick said, there's a 3% overall increase on average to our member town, so I think if Brian took last year's enrollment, put 3% on it, it'll give you a rough range of what you need to do. From hearing earlier in the meeting that you're, you know, up against the levy limit, so as we get the governors...
So Russ, I just put the enrollment 10-year trend on the board.
Yep.
So this is for the town of Irving. You can see how you have been trending. You had 28 students this October count, the same exact number, which is, gives us 100% confidence that your assessment's going to be pretty close to what it was. And since our overall enrollment has gone up, that usually means a slight diminish in the per people expenditures, so that number might even come down a little bit from last year's number. We can project for next year at October 1, 2023, that you're going to be less than you are this year. That's based on seven graduates from the town of Irving for this upcoming year, and right now we have five applicants, so that would assess that you'd be about 26. Last year, we thought you were going to be at 29, so we were off by one. But I'd rather be off that way. So we are pretty close in that number. That will fluctuate one or two either way. It might go up two or three, it could go down two or three, but that's what we have in the bank now. So Russ, I stole your thunder a little bit, but continue on.
That's okay. So once the governor's figures come out, I'm sure you guys are waiting for them for your, for your town aid. We're waiting for it for the, for the school aid, for the chapter 78 piece. Plus, to calculate our 19-member towns' assessments, I need the minimum contributions from the governor's calculation, or I can't even stock to slice the pie 19 ways. So when that comes out, I'll share it with Brian as soon as I can, because, you know, I know you guys are up against it, so we'll, we'll get that figure to you. Overall, on the expenditure side, we're up 2.7% on total budget. We are a school in a growth mode. Over the last five years, our enrollment has gone up roughly 20%, so that reflects somewhat in our costs going up. The good news for our towns is the state formula for chapter 70. We are not in hold harmless, so it actually helps. As our enrollment grows, so does our state aid. That grows with us. So kind of a unique situation in Franklin County.
So I have in front of you the, the enrollment chart of where we are in district. So this current year, we have 559 students, grades nine through 12. We are projecting about 572. We have a senior class of 126. We're expecting about 160 through the door. Some of those students will be out of district. So our projection is about 572 in district enrollment. So when you're, so when you are in a school that's increasing in enrollment, you will have additional costs. You get a little more teachers, you get a little bit more administrators. So go ahead.
Very good. The main, the main thing that we want to do, and again, it won't affect next year's assessment, but we're, we're looking out, we're projecting out. So with 20% increase in enrollment, puts us pretty much at capacity of what we can stuff into our building. We've changed an assembly hall that is no longer an assembly hall. It has modular walls in it. We created four classrooms out of the assembly hall. We are building some outbuildings. Rick does a fantastic job of chasing down grants. So we have a veterinary science building that is an outbuilding that will house veterinary science program. Rick just recently chased down close to $5 million in grant funds for a aviation program. The aviation program, we're working with the airport next door. The aviation hangar will be located on airport land within walking distance from our campus because we're abutted against each other. So we will have increased some capacity through, through those outbuildings. However, we are, have been accepted into the MSBA, the Mass School Building Association program. So over the next year or so, we will be doing a feasibility study to see what a new building would cost for us. It would be located on our campus. Most of the improvements are, almost all of them, I guess they do for both schools, is they don't do renovations. It's a tear down and a rebuild. So we've got a spot on our campus that they could do the rebuild while we remain in the older building. So the big thing, when you do get the budget book, you'll see on the expenditure side that we had a $500,000 line item that was for our energy management system. It was a long-term lease that we did through Siemens Building Technologies for energy savings, and the energy savings helped pay for the system. That $500,000 line is coming off the budget, but we're taking the 500,000 and moving it to capital stabilization to fund the feasibility study. So you wouldn't think a feasibility study would be, I think the last time we had one done years ago was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for a feasibility study. Now they're telling us it's going to be a million, million-two for architects to come out and start planning for a school, so.
So that's why we decided to go this route as opposed to going out to bonding for all our towns, and they're stuck with a long-term lease. If we can just, you know, strategically look at the extinction of the rental lease equipment, and we knew that was coming off the books, and we were hoping that the MSBA, we got really lucky. It looked like we were good, but we weren't. We just pure lucked that that fell in our lap. That, that enables us to not have to go out to bonding for our town for a feasibility study. Because the worst thing that we wanted to do was not to go out to bonding for a feasibility study and then come back a year or two later for a core building project. That just didn't make sense to us. So we wanted to make sure that we can cover it within our existing budget moving forward because the building itself, on best-case scenario, is not going to be built for five years. So that's where we are from a time, a time perspective.
So I know at school committee meetings, Jackie has brought up that you guys have a capital planning committee. So obviously, once this feasibility study is done, they'll have schematic drawings, and the estimates will start to come out on what the whole project will cost. And then we'll start to get estimates on what the state will reimburse us. Last time we did a project through MSBA, it was 73, 74 cents on a dollar that the state paid for. So we're hoping that we'll be in the 70, 75% range on reimbursement from MSBA. So we won't, I'm sure you'll continue to ask at meetings, as soon as we start to get those figures put together, again, we will share out because we know as towns, you all have to start to plan in advance of this too. So, so this is really, as we go out to our towns and meet with the town fincoms this year, we're introducing the topic that Franklin Tech is looking at a new building, looking to vocational school enrollment hasn't ever been this hot in the 25 years I've been up at the tech school. It's that way across the state. We hope to build a little bit of capacity into our building. Being that we're the second smallest vocational school in the state, the only one smaller than us is out in Berkshire County. So, but if we could build a little bit of capacity, you get some economies of scale in vocational schools. Actually, when you get up near 1,000 students, we'll never get there, but, but there's a sweet spot around 700 in enrollment that you can start to see some of the costs plaining off. So, you know, we'll see what the state will allow us to build as far as capacity goes with that. But even despite that, we've got two new programs, the vet science program and the aviation program that's going to go. They'll be, they'll be in outbuildings. They'll be sustainable and won't be affected by the, the construction costs. So that's, that's the summary on the, on the expenditures. Like I said, that went up roughly about the amount that we're asking the town assessments to go up for. Our average over the last 10 years for town assessments is about 2.5%. And I would put that up against any school over the last five years. I think we've done a pretty good job of being responsible in what we're asking for our member towns. We try to keep this reasonable. And again, we are blessed because we have enrollment growing and chapter 78 is growing for us, and, and we hope to keep your assessments reasonable.
I just want to highlight a couple of the line items that you see here that have gone up. One is the district leadership and administration. You'll see that tick up. What we had is with student enrollment growth in our compliance reviews, we hired a dean of students, and we have an assistant principal for 600 and something kids. So we needed a dean of students to support that as well. So that's how you can see some of that cost rise, as well as we have started an evening program for the first time in our history, a very viable one. We are now utilizing, we were able to chase down a $660,000 grant to get our evening school up and running. However, you know, we do need to hire an evening school coordinator. We are doing some programs on our own. We do have electrical, we have welding, we have carpentry and auto tech as some of the starter ones that we have right now. And we plan on having that school vibrant at night and support the adults in the area so that they can stay here, pay taxes, and not move out of the community. So that's the next phase of what we're trying to get done. And right now, we're doing it through grant money, so it's not an expenditure to our towns. So we're trying to grow that particular program. The other line item you see is the instructional cost. As we explained, we have to add teachers to keep up with the enrollment. So that's where you see that on going from the 7.2 to the 7.4 million. And the other ones are pretty modest on, there's nothing that really stands on, on all of the other items that we didn't already explain. So that's how we use our money. As far as, you know, I, I don't have to get into the district-wide charts unless I get a question in that, but we, that budget book's going to include a lot of information that if you can't sleep at night, it's a good read if you have to click through.
So you have the visuals and you've got the numbers. I got it.
So that's where we're at.
Any questions of us?
Thank you. Questions? Please?
Just one question. What did you open, 1969 or '70?
1976.
1975?
1976.
76, okay.
Yep. So far, they, they built more than a half a dozen boat tech schools. They seem to get more worn and torn because of the, because of the use of the building. Just this past summer, we were in a situation, we would have had it shut down for almost one month if we didn't plan ahead. We had to buy an electrical switchgear, knowing that some of the old switchgear was going to go. So we invested, you know, so we said, let's just buy a brand new one just in case, just throw 50,000 at that. And we did, and it tripped, it didn't trip back when we had, when we had a storm, and we knew it was going to happen. And then when they came and inspected it, there were 11 other switchgears in the same condition. So we was thinking, wait a second here. You know, this is kind of, some of the reasons, like the outside of the building looks great, but when you get inside and you see miles of wire up in the ceiling tiles, and you see all these electrical switchgear problems and the things going on, it's roll the dice. So now we're going to get another switchgear and spend that money to make sure, so the next one that goes will be ready, and it's going to go within a year.
My reason for asking was just to point out to people listening who don't know, you've been around almost 50 years over there, and things don't last forever.
Right. Yeah. Well, I have a few for you. So what, I mean, ideally, what are you thinking of for timing for that building project? You know, assuming things progress?
Assuming everything goes perfect. Right now, we're in the eligibility stage, and that really starts to kick in May 1st. And we're preparing for that particular phase now. Then if we move on, and I'm sure we will, it will go to the feasibility study phase. That's a two-year process. It's feasibility and design. So before it goes out to the towns, they have to design the exact size and cost of that particular building so they can give a good estimate of what we're actually talking about. So we have to do our enrollment projections, the state does their enrollment projecting, and they will then determine the size of the building that will then be built. And then we have to go out to all 19-member towns for a district-wide vote for the feasibility study portion of it. And then if that clears, now we're on year three already, right? They might consider putting a shovel in ground if everything's going well by year four, and that's usually a two-year build at that particular point, so it's year four and five. That's your best-case scenario, you know? So we're anywhere between four and seven years would be about the estimate. We're going to know, you know, we'll be sitting at this table next year, and we'll have a clearer idea about that particular scope. It won't come crystal clear until we're out to the towns for one big district-wide vote.
When you're looking at that, the newer building, like the outbuildings, are those all part of it too, or is it primarily just the primary structure?
No, we were strategic with the outbuildings because we've been chasing this MSB thing for about six, seven years now. And we put the outbuildings out where they could service the public. So one where the vet center is, is right on Industrial Boulevard. So that's not going to get in the way of any potential new building project. We actually have 10 acres behind the baseball field, which on the other side of the campus where it would probably go. And of course, the hangar is going to be 20 feet off of our property line, on the airport property line, according to the FAA. That's the way we have to have it. So that's, you know, we'll build a little brick pathway right there for the students, but that's not going to impact any future building project.
Could you go back to the funding source page?
Sources of funding. Yep.
Maybe that wasn't the one. I'll ask the question anyway. We have the capital that we're in year eight of, right? Paying back, the last capital investment was...
Yep.
About eight years ago, give or take?
Yes, yeah.
So we've got about seven to go.
Yep.
So potentially, we're almost done paying for that when this is getting...
Right.
Started or completed.
Right, exactly. And if there's anything left over on that, you know, that's when they just kind of either roll it in or we just pay for it.
And that's how much, that's what I was looking for?
About 13,000 in change for the town of Irving.
In our assessment, yeah.
Yeah, about 13,500. And that's not going to fluctuate drastically. You'll get a few hundred bucks from year to year.
Yeah, I think last year was 15,000.
Debt service line on there, is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That was only a $2, $2 million bonding.
Well, that was...
I don't think we'll build a school...
I wasn't going to ask you that question, but...
I don't think we'll be building a school for $2 million, but...
No, but it did bring up a question. You talked about the potential for the feasibility study to be 1.2 million. So is that, would we expect our capital assessment to incorporate that, or is there a different funding source?
We planned this for about six years, so we wouldn't have to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
We should have the funds to pay for the feasibility study without...
So you have a stabilization account in order to find future expenses?
Yes.
Got it.
We'll wait until you get the big hit.
Appreciate that.
How many zeros is my first question?
I'll be retired about that.
I just, I think I got lost along the way, so there was some conversation about 3%, and then our assessment wasn't changing. Should we assume our assessment is going up 3% year over year, or it is similar to what we paid in the current fiscal year, or are paying?
I think I gave a range. I told Brian, assume 3%. You know, I gave a, a little range to go by for that. So if, if it were me, I would take last year's assessment, add 3, 5% or something. And the only reason why, again, minimum contributions in that state formula drives, drives us. So depending on maybe some of the other towns shifted a little bit, so even though you're still at 28, your piece of the pie might fluctuate a little bit from, from that. So I hate giving, trying to give an exact number at this point in time until the governor's numbers come out.
I just thought I heard you say zero, and then you say three, and then you say three, and then you say zero. I was like, I'm not sure which, so that's all right. We'll, we'll, we have a number to put in as a...
Optimist realist.
I'm more to his right as well. But we've done a lot with optimism, the amount of grant stuff.
Yeah, that's why I'm usually right.
I have to say. Speaking of that, the evening program, how, so that's going? How is it?
So we started it the first time this fall.
Yeah, how was the interest?
So we filled up in our welding, which was really nice. Our auto tech did very well. They were close to capacity. And then we did, yeah, those were the two we started out with, correct. And so we're adding two more potentially for the spring. And so enrollment's ongoing right now. So that's our first little shot at this, and we would like to have five or six programs. So that's, you know, a full-fledged evening program. So we're going to start planning and be able to budget for that as we begin to go down the road in the next four or five years. Because we think it's important, and we know that if we're offering that type of training, people will maintain their level of expertise, they'll maintain their jobs, they'll gain skill sets, they'll stay here in the county.
Are these evening courses slash classes, are they home classes?
Mm-hmm.
Is there cost sharing, or is it offered?
Right now, we're, it's free because it's done through that $660,000 grant, you know? So we're trying to grow the program, so when the grant does expire, we'll have vibrant type of program where we can talk about, you know, what that would be from a pay perspective. I just met with the state today, and we talked about the CTI program. So they are going to entertain, the idea that we put forth was to phase it in. So right now, they're paying 100% of the cost for those that are able to, to attend. And maybe in a few years after it gets phased down, maybe the state pays 75% and the students pay 25%. And then two years after that, it might go to 50/50. And then eventually, so I think it's going to be a long-term situation, which is exciting.
And these are programs for someone who is looking to get into this field, or for helping someone maintain credentialing or certifications?
It's for both of those avenues. For example, we have the electrical program that we're funding, so this is outside of the CTI, and that's to get people towards their journey with license. So it's a lot of different type of evening pathways that we're considering. It's kind of really new to us, so we're, you know, we're kind of building the plane as we're flying it.
How is the vet program going? That was one of the last planes before the aviation, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's going really well. I think our teachers and students will be very thankful when the building's ready, hopefully by next fall. It's a little tight in there now. So it's, you know, we, we utilized an old chemistry classroom space and then an associated classroom to try to build a vet center right there through grant funding. And we were successful in doing that, but now when all the grade levels are in there for the first time, which was this year, see, what we did is we added one grade level a year. We started out with just ninth graders, the following year was ninth and 10th, then ninth, 10th, and 11th, and now we're ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. So, yeah, it's time for that building.
Have you spent around a while after graduating back there?
Wow. I didn't realize that had been already four years.
Yeah, it goes quick. Yeah, it goes quick.
You had me curious when you talked about the transportation miles versus the next closest. How, do you happen to know how the enrollment numbers compare? I'm just curious, like, miles per pupil, if it's significantly different?
No, there is a formula where they have like one student per X amount of miles. But I don't have that in front of me, but...
I was just curious if you had.
Yeah.
Oh, good. I asked plenty, so anyone else? Anyone in the audience? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So as a placeholder, you're looking at 15,000 to 25,000 increase in assessment, 3% to 5%.
Did you say 15,000 to 25,000?
Thousand.
Dollars. In total assessment, yes. Yeah, okay. Gotcha. Because the 18 will go up, the 13 will not.
Correct, although we had, we had it down as 15, not 13, 5. I have the ATM right here. It was 15,035, not 13, 5.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Maybe the actuals versus the projections?
Could be.
At this point, maybe?
Could be.
Okay. Next, we have some items that we touched on earlier, I believe, but then circled back on. These are on memo, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, or our assessments around health insurance, retirement, property liability, FERCOG. So most of those are same or less in terms of our Franklin Regional Council Government Assessment and our...
Correct.
Solid Waste Management District?
Correct. Just, just retirement, right, went up?
Retirement's the only one that went up. I'm still waiting to get, and I have a meeting with our insurance company this week. I'm still just waiting to get final numbers. There was a slight percentage increase. But they look back at your claim history. They also look at any changes in assets. So two buildings came off of our asset rolls this year. We got a vehicle. So there's, there's changes that have occurred. So I want to get a firm number. So it's not simple enough just to put the percent increase that was talked about. So I'm just waiting to get final assessment numbers.
That's on the property liability you're talking about?
Property liability, professional liability, injured on duty.
Okay.
Yeah, workers comp.
And hoping to have all those before the 27th?
They all come from the same vendor. So it's only one entity to work with on that.
Okay.
Yep. And most of them, I feel pretty solid on it's property and liability that overall is the one I'm concerned has more complexity to it.
Brian, is the IP building off of our insurance carrier or is it still on?
Is the which building?
IP.
It is still on.
When does that do the...
It is right now through August. It covers through August. So the conversation that you all were having with Mariah a few meetings ago or a meeting ago, the conversation that we have to continue to have with the capital planning committee is very relevant to continuing to insure that property.
Though, knock on what I shouldn't say too loudly, I guess, Lloyd's continues to renew it even though they've told us a few years ago that they were not going to, I believe. They said that was the last year and then we got a renewal proposal, so we've kept it.
They're renewing it. This is very expensive.
Oh, yeah.
Lloyd's of London?
Yes, literally. Yep, Zat Lloyd's, yes, yes. Yes. What's, what's that?
Same company who paid out the insurance claim on that.
Although that sounds awful, I'm sure they win more than they lose.
What is the cost of our insurance for that?
For our Pmail?
Yep.
Right now, it's down to the exact number with me, but it's just under $10,000 for that one piece, that one property.
$10,000 a year?
Yes. And obviously, it's bare bones coverage.
Against our...
So noting that everything else, we can work within the existing appropriation or slightly decrease it? Like the FERCOG assessment, I can decrease that line item. I can make those changes if you all are fine with that. Retirement, it is an assessment that they have, they have already voted to approve. I don't know any other way to address that other than to make the according adjustment on our end. Unless there's any other work you want me to do with the retirement board.
I don't think so.
So I'll make those revisions. Okay.
In terms of the memo, just without pulling it up off the top of your head, sufficient, the requests are sufficient. Did the requests include escalations already year-over-year in general?
I, when I put those requests in, I had ballparks from any of our regional assessment entities as to what they were looking at. So I had put a small cushion in there. And so when I got the final numbers back, it was within, it is either spot-on or it's within $100 or $200. So it's very close.
But there are increases year-over-year mixed through those numbers, right?
Usually. FERCOG is, for instance, a one that has come down, I think, two years in a row. And the Solid Waste District is another one that actually has a slight decrease this year. It was a couple hundred dollars. But, yeah, even though those districts have experienced increases, changes in our EQV, changes with the population, a couple other contributing factors have come into play when it comes to assessing what our, our portion of those costs are.
Slightly tangent, but not to the property and liability insurance is the cybersecurity requirements, right? They are requiring or expecting by fiscal year end?
Yes.
Do you have any sense on whether non-compliance has a cost or it's just not an option?
I'm meeting with our insurance company this week.
Compliance has a significant cost.
Compliance is a significant cost.
So...
Yes. So a high level of what Jake's talking about, I'm not shocked. But we do have a deadline of June 30 to put some new protocols into place. We'd already started down this road, but it's going to be much more expansive and it's got to be much more firm. So we have a lot of work on our side within the town, also within the school, to finish putting these protocols in place. That probably means license adjustments and a few other things. So four and a half months is not a lot of time to get everything in place by June 30 and full compliance. We're going to make our best attempt at that. But it's, it's working with the insurance company over the next four and a half months on progress. And I think it's a fair question to say what happens if June 30, there's some aspects of it that are still in development. So I will work on that piece.
I'm actually asking it more because of the cost to get there.
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering.
And the cost to get there is going, isn't in the budget. To get compliant by July 1 is not in this year's budget and it's not in next year's budget.
That's fair.
Proposals right now.
Right.
Not in the IT budget cost. And that's where primarily where the costs are.
It's largely on licensing, correct.
And whether we can do it by July 1 or we can do it by September or whatever that timeline looks like.
Fair.
They may be okay with that, but what if we don't do it till FY '25? That's what I'm asking because we need to either plan to budget for those costs.
Right.
And do them in some timeline that they would accept, which I understand they may be leaning about final deadline if we're making steps and we're underway. But 18 months from now is a different story. To even start or realistically start.
Okay, I'll work on that this week.
Do you have a ballpark on what that cost is?
How many?
No.
How, I can throw a number, I can throw something at the wall, I mean, just in scale, right? Like, what's a billion, a building cost? I didn't mean to say million. Almost came out that way. How many roughly non-school employees, including, you know, appointed, all of it?
We have about 70 on our, on our side.
70 or 80?
Plus on the school side, you've got every student plus staff.
But that cost is not, that cost should be in the school budget.
Agreed, agreed. But knowing what these platforms are and working them into your point, making sure that both the town and the school IT budgets both reflect these changes are what we're tasked with working on right now. We got the directive about a month ago, so we've been working to get our, our arms around what that would look like. But I think these are all fair questions.
In some of these areas, just because they had the risk and they had, I hope. So hopefully, they are further along in terms of that and in terms of embedded the costs already.
I've asked everybody to get back to me in the next two weeks as to where we stand so that in March, I can start putting together our response to the insurance company. So I should have more information in the next two weeks.
I mean, it could easily be $40,000 or more annually. It's not a one-time, it's annual.
Yeah, these are annual costs.
Most of the costs are going to be annual.
And that's just licensed, licensed user costs?
Yeah. Because we may have to go with a, I may have to go with a license that's five or six times more expensive than we pay right now for like committees and elected and, you know, non-staff, like on-staff hours.
Right.
And even the staff licenses, which we just upgraded, are, need to be almost 2X probably to be compliant with some of the requirements. So it's, it's working through exactly which one of those do we have to do? Which ones are just recommended? Can we phase them in over more than one year?
Right.
And all those pieces to it. And what solutions, depending on what solutions we have to utilize, it could go up from there.
Right.
I guess we'll try to work with the IT coordinator and come up with number, a number to at least discuss as we look at the overall budgets and where, where does everything fit? Because we need some placeholder in there at least.
Well, that's, that's why I was asking the question is if we, if we have a placeholder and we can use that as a conversation piece when we're pushing back saying, is there any chance we can push this deadline based on our, our financial landscape, you know?
Right.
Right. Every $10,000 matters. So we'll try to come up with more of that and you can, can you work with Maya on...
Yeah, I already have them coming in this week.
So that was just my comment about, because of property liability. From there, overall budget discussion, I feel like there was a couple topics under that, but off the top of my head, I'm drawing a blank. But just in general, I mean, any, anything that the group needs or wants for our next meeting to start really getting details because, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I think we're going to be talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars above the levy limit in terms of the requests that we've reviewed so far. I, I don't recall many budgets that were south of 3% or more. And tonight, we just added $400,000 above 3%, so...
Just, just for clarity, though, when you're talking, that's status quo on earmarking for stabilization, capital stabilization. When you're saying 400, several hundred thousand over our levy limit? It's after we've put what we're anticipating and what we have historically anticipated putting in.
That's assuming everything was equal from last year, including receipts, including new growth.
Correct.
And including the capital investments that we did and savings investments last year.
Okay.
If those are all level, right?
If those are all level. That's, I just wanted the clarity in my own mind.
Maybe, maybe they're not. Because we have free cash, it's a little larger than normal. So maybe those capitals aren't, don't have to come from, raise inappropriate. I think we almost funded all of our capital in raise appropriate last year.
All but 125.
I think we have for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, I don't know. But even if we didn't, even if there was capacity, other than my concerns about the, the budget growth just not being sustainable, just because we can do capital projects out of potentially the general, free cash today, this year, what about future years? Because that budget's not going to, theoretically, not going to go down.
Correct.
Year-over-year, and now it becomes the new floor. And that, if that gave no capacity for capital investment, then are we doing almost none for how many years in the future? And that at least isn't how we've operated before, and I don't think that's where we want to be. So I personally, again, speculation, but anything that, the question's more just generalized. Anything that I, that we, anybody wants to see or have for that discussion beyond the whole thing put together, you know, refreshed? Anything that's, that's out of date and updates to it? I mean, we know there's a few things that are estimates still, but...
Nope, just a, just a total.
I'll start, I'll start putting it together and build the recap.
There is one thing, it's probably already on your radar, but we have a capital plan. We have operating budgets. We've reviewed them all at this point. We don't have the rest of the annual town meeting articles that carry money. Because there's a few outliers that they're not in capital and they're not in an operating budget, right? Or did you tell me those are in the budget review?
You're talking about the recurring specials?
Yes.
They're, they have been, as you've been going through those budgets, they have been in, in a subcategory. So you've seen them, but I think as we discussed, you haven't had like a specific functional conversation on that. So I'll, I'll email that out to you what that looks like as you would have seen it in your warrant article. Because we do address those all as a standalone warrant article. It's, it's a line item grid, so I can send that to you.
And we haven't addressed any changes to the wage tables?
Correct.
They're not in the costs that we've already reviewed for anything.
Correct.
But the school, I think, had something in there for two years.
Correct. So I will start putting that together for you.
Is that a topic for next meeting? Are we ready for that? Are you ready for that?
I, I will be.
Good. The, the analysis on wages and looking at wage table, the wage tables and the market and doing that three-year... Right, last year, we said, you know, we, we made so small change, but that we would look at it this year, so... And that impacts the budget, obviously, by, I don't know, I think we estimated six figures a percent or something, give or take, last year, so...
Yeah.
In that ballpark, it's, it's significant. The steps were all included, though?
Yeah.
Current step changes?
Correct. Correct.
Before we get into the STM, the next meeting is on the 27th.
Right.
Here.
Correct.
I believe capital is going to try to meet before that to review the updated cost estimates for the Pmail demolition. So that, we should have at least new numbers. I don't know if we'll have any recommendation for that joint meeting. Or a different recommendation, I should say. Anything else on budget before we go to the STM? Okay. Review the special town meeting warrant draft. Your red March font.
Whoa.
Yeah. That pops off that page.
Just really wanted to bring attention to that.
We have confirmation from the moderator to availability?
We have sent him correspondence. I've not gotten a confirmation back, so we will be following up again. I do have it from the town clerk. Do have it from the facility. So to my knowledge, everybody is ready. Moderator is the last person to confirm.
Okay.
As you noted, in this draft, everything that is in red is what was changed, other than the deletion of Article 10, which was the opioid settlement article that you said hold to future meetings, right? Sorry. The STM draft you have in front of you, everything in red is what has been changed, added. The only thing that's deleted in this version is Article 10, which you all asked to have removed and held for a future... removed and held for a future town meeting, whether it's ATM or another special.
Thank you. The number for the health department, that's been the number they came to? Or is that still a draft number?
It's the closest I've been able to get with them so far. Yes. Scott, myself, and the health departments, or the health boards of health met two weeks ago to try to iron that out. There's still a little, there's some decisions left to be made. And so it's the closest number I can get to it this time.
They're meeting again?
They're meeting again this week.
Wednesday and Thursday, Board of Health and Oversight Committee.
Right.
Brian, not to be fussy, but for Article 6, for the water capital improvement mixing take, just reading that makes it sound like it is for the actual mixer itself.
Article 6?
Yeah. Can we just have a little clarity that it's not the actual mixer itself? It's basically to go out and...
So listing it as engineering was not sufficient enough? So you want that clear?
No, where did you?
In the line item. So Article 6 says one.
Nope, you're good. I'm sorry.
No, I can, if I was to clarify that in the article information, would that be helpful?
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
And we could even just add a note that this is phase one of a two-phase project? Because the next part, to your point, will be the actual work? Okay.
A question, do we usually have a separate account number for the different phases of the projects?
You have at times and you haven't at other times. It depends. If it's been a complex project, yes, we have had different line items. For something this small, typically we'd, we'd have a single line item for it. But because we agreed to do it in phasing, this is how I drafted so far, but we can change it if you'd like.
I, I think the clarity is important, but, but that brings up around, this is only engineering, but I just also on the flip side know the project title, like on the account title, it's normally the whole project. We're just putting in a portion of the funding today for engineering and then a portion later.
We can do that, then.
I, I don't, I don't have a right answer. It just seemed odd.
So what if I, to the conversation you all are having, what if I put all of the clarity on that one in the article information and I remove the word engineering?
I was just going to suggest the same.
Does that accomplish it?
Yeah, just put it in, yeah.
And then at the annual, if you all finally have the number that you're going to work with or a special, whenever you deal with the next part, you can add the next amount into the same line item. We'll change the article. Okay.
I like that.
Okay.
Assuming you're up for doing that tonight.
Yeah.
Or sometime this week. You need it this week, right?
Yes, I'd like to get it to a constable for posting this week and then Betsy and I will have the, the document produced in house so we can get it to the residents.
Article 8?
Okay.
And nine didn't have a note on here from the finance committee. Do you want us to just remove it if you aren't taking a position? Or did you, or did you want to? I think that's the only two.
The only two without actual money?
Without a vote?
They haven't taken any votes yet. Only capital's giving me a vote.
Because we vote the warrant as a whole.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I'm seeing capital thinking, but nevermind. Sorry. No, no, it's not your fault. I'm, I'm, I'm good. Disregard my question.
Well, no, I'm going to pose the question to my board. Gentlemen, do you feel that we need to weigh in on the cemetery articles?
As I understand it, the select board has been a cemetery commissioners very long and they're trying to find under a point three new people who have to pay, which would be a financial thing, I guess.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't have any question.
I think that was the intention, but I don't know that we discussed it.
Yeah, there was no discussion.
I'm just trying to remember. I don't think there's any discussion of compensation. This, this more came out of if there wanted to be a semit, a, a group of cemetery commissioners who were not the board, we would be fine with that, but for a long time it has been the board de facto. So the process in the bylaw isn't what we're doing in actuality. So we should probably make it reflect what we really do currently and then go from there.
I was there, it wasn't a real pain in the neck, but, but, you know, just three more people is another bureaucracy to deal with. I can do without them.
It'd be a straw poll, but I, I think, you know, I don't think any of us were proposing to, to look for new commissioners just because we changed this necessarily.
Right.
If there was some interest, there are positions that exist, but right now they would be served by the board as they are.
Good. Thank you.
At least personally, I wasn't planning on saying, okay, now we need to go out and get three new commissioners so we could stop doing it. It wasn't, uh...
I, I think we're, we're, we're in agreement that, that it works well under the board.
Right.
I asked the question financially, but non-financially, I've been pleased with what the board does. And, and like I said, I don't think it's a whole lot of a pain in the neck for the most part, other than you need a new cemetery, but other than that. Please keeping it how it is.
Thank you. That probably still doesn't answer Deb's question.
Since there's nothing financial about it, I don't know that we need to take enough.
Okay.
Be my thought.
Sounds good. So finance committee will not weigh in on Article 8 and 9?
Okay, so I'll remove those references. Other than the adjustment to the water mixer article, are we good with the rest of the document?
Yes.
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 I would. I was just reading the numbers again, but yeah, no, you're, you're fine.
So we're doing the finance committee recommendation?
Anybody like to make a motion either way?
I think we don't weigh in on 8 and 9.
Are the numbers for Article 3?
We're talking about something else. It's already in here now.
It's just, it's the, the school's
Let me go back.
Funding. When's that really done? Is that finalized?
You're talking about the 150,000? Yeah.
I, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess that would actually be part of that, not the whole total.
Correct. So they had asked for 380 and we decided 150 now and then see where their end of year budget comes in, if we need to do another adjustment in a final special in June or not.
And then the total will be the angle. Okay, that's good.
They were, they were acceptable or understanding about that?
I mentioned it at the last school committee meeting and didn't hear any rebuttal. I mean, the town has always taken the stance that, you know, we'll review these at specials if need be and if there's a request, they have no problem asking, so.
It was brought up in the school committee meeting prior as well, which was right after when we discussed this and I was there. And it was noted by some of the audience and they, you know, asked me a couple of questions and I, I think I said 200 because I was like, I don't have it in front of me, but we, we said something and someone corrected me to 150. Just that we would do that and then see where it was at the end of the fiscal year. There was no, I didn't hear any concerns raised either.
So could I ask the chair, what, what kind of a motion are you looking for?
A motion if we would like to support the annual special town meeting warrant, the articles on it. If we would recommend or not recommend them.
Articles 1 through 7.
1 through 7.
I'd move we recommend Article 1 through 7.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you have it, sir.
Is there any abstentions?
Any abstentions? No, it was unanimous.
Four, oh.
Thank you. I apologize, Ash, just before you're comfortable with the health number though is enough generally to do what we need to do for the rest of the year.
Correct.
If you'd like to make a motion, just as amended.
For the?
For the whole warrant.
For the whole warrant?
Unless there's anything else on it before we do.
Well, we'll find it.
Make a motion to approve the special town meeting warrant for March 6, 2023, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen?
I didn't want to make that if you were still reviewing any.
I was looking at the numbers, but I, I didn't see anything the first four times or something.
Yeah.
Just, are they all sourced right and are the numbers and the words, you know, we try to check it, but... I think that's all we had for the finance committee unless you had anything else for us. And before I do it again, sir, is that all we had? Because last time I did this, we had an emergency 48-hour later meeting.
We took care of the MOU, we did the procurement, you did your license, the cemetery, the appointment, you've done the warrant, you've done the policy reads, yeah, you did everything.
All right. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.